Business for tonight's regularly scheduled school committee meeting is to suspend regularly this tonight's regularly school committee meeting for the purposes of entering our school budget public hearing. So we'll be looking for a motion to suspend our regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Motion? And a second?
Mrs. Maroney has made a message, a motion, and Mrs. Davidson has made a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Dr. Cron.
Thank you. I would like tonight to present the Rockland Public Schools FY twenty-two budget. It'd be a very brief presentation. We had a modest increase. If you look across the top, the top column where it says revenue, town FY twenty-one over to the tenth of May, you'll see we had a slight increase from last year's budget. Our, this budget number includes our steps and lanes and projected contractual increases. It includes our English language tutors. That will be funded by the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, E S S E R. We call it ESER, which is federal money. So we'll be using that to fund the EL tutors. We are concerned about potential increase in sped for next year. Just given the year that we've had and the interruptions to learning, we're just anticipating more anxiety around student achievement on behalf of parents, especially younger parents who may be concerned. So we're starting to see a little rise in referral requests, requests for testing. So we're anticipating some increases in sped and we're watching that very closely. One of the things that we've done in anticipation of this is we've, we've, I use the word tweaked. I don't know if that's an actual academic word, but we tweak the infrastructure by adding sped lead teachers in each building to help with anticipated volume of sped work. So this is something that our teachers have been asking for, for a while. So we'll have sped lead teachers in each building to help with any potential increase in sped testing and activity next year. But I would ask, I would ask for patience on behalf of the public. I'd ask the public to be patient. What we're finding through eye ready testing and through anecdotal data of working with the students, and when I ask the principals point blank, how are the kids doing? They're doing very well. And I think what they're finding is that our week on, week off model was very successful as far as getting through the curriculum. The question remains, how deeply did we go into the curriculum? And was it, did we just cover it? And so there are, there is a little bit of unknown, but in, in all in all, the principals report that the students are doing quite well and they've covered the material. For example, our advanced placement courses began their testing last week, and these courses are extremely rigorous and time consuming. Some even start in the summer because it takes so long to get through the curriculum. So they, the students are, felt prepared for the test and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing how they do. But all in all, I guess my message is we, we were feeling very confident that the students have done quite well in spite of the, in spite, in spite of the model and being home, and we're feeling very, very good about that. We've added reading specialists at the elementary, again funded by ESER. The reading specialist, the one area that we're particularly concerned with is our students learning to read on time. By the end of first grade is really our goal. So we'll have a reading specialist in each one of our elementary schools that will work directly with students. So we'll have a lead teacher in place. We'll have instructional tutors in place, and then we will have actual reading specialists that work one-on-one with the children or in small groups. If they need, they'll either push in, go into the classroom and work with them, or pull out, pull them out into another room and do, do small group work with them. We've increased our use of circuit breaker and revolving, and we're concerned that this is unsustainable. So we're hoping to get back into the Student Opportunities Act pool for chapter seventy next year to help address the structural issue. So as you know, our slight decline in enrollment led to us falling out of the Student Opportunity Act pool, and it really hurt our chapter seventy. So we went from one point four million down to sixty-four thousand. We're, we're still holding out hope that there's going to be some action on that front. We're in touch with some pretty high level folks on the state level, and we have some reasons to believe that some things may change with chapter seventy. So we're still very, very hopeful. But in summary, I am asking for the school committee to vote the FY twenty-two budget of thirty million eight hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
What is the seven hundred and fifty thousand sort of highlighted?
That is money that we've rolled over, that we've been able to save this year, and we're rolling into next year, and we're going to use that money.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why that's highlighted. And the hundred and ninety-five thousand is the deficit that we're beginning the year with. We're beginning with a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar deficit.
And are there other steps that you anticipate you guys will be looking to fund to deal with the loss of learning over the past year?
I, I'm, I want to wait and see, first of all. I really want more data. I want to know, I want to see how the students do on MCAS. But I'm, I'm holding out, I'm withholding judgment. I, I don't know how much they've lost. I will say that the teachers are reporting a level of independence from the students. I think they may have lost some depth of content, but we believe that the hybrid model and working from home remotely actually increased their independence, and we've seen some signs of that. And so if our students have actually learned how to learn more effectively, in the long run, those gains are going to outpace even any learning loss. So I'd really like everyone to be patient and let us really, really see how much loss has there been. And of course, we're very concerned with our special education and English language learner students, or any students who would have fallen behind in a regular year. We're watching them more, more closely. And as I said earlier, we're implementing, you know, some strategies to try to mitigate. But all in all, we're, we're feeling very good. This morning's meeting with the principals was very, very positive. And that's thanks to the incredible work of the teachers, and also the families who have worked so carefully and, and skillfully at home with their children. So we're feeling pretty good about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the committee?
Yes.
Just one question. The summer programs that you mentioned?
Yes.
All of that is covered in this budget, and I believe there's potential of grants from the state?
There's no grant, there's federal money coming that we're going to use. We're going to use the ESER money for a summer program. I was going to tell you about that later, but I'll tell you about it now.
No, we can go.
No, that's okay. We, we are going to run a special three-week summer program, end of July, beginning of August, but I'll get you the dates. I want to firm up the dates. It's going to be a three-week program for all students. It's going to be free. It's going to be incredibly engaging and fun. It's going to be theme-based. We're going to, we're going to have a steam week. We're going to have a Worlds of Water week, and I can't remember what the other week is. But the idea is for the kids, I want the kids to want to come. I want it to be fun, engaging, but we are going to, to focus in on ELA and math. It's going to be three hours in the morning, Monday through Thursday, for three weeks. And we've just locked in Kelsey Holbrook to be our director for the program. Kelsey is a reading teacher, coach down at Memorial Park. So we're very excited about the summer program and looking forward to hiring and, and getting that off the ground. So I will get those dates out to families as soon as they're firmed up.
Okay.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay, so before we take a vote, I just want to take a second just to comment, just to thank our town administrator, Doug Lapp, our town accountant, who we all affectionately refer to as Biz, our finance committee, our board of selectmen, for all being good partners in the development of our entire town's budget, but also being supportive of our schools and helping us through this very difficult year. And I know with the trusting and cooperative relationship that we have going forward, hopefully we can, we can develop an even better and more healthy and robust school budget for our children going into the near and distant future. With that being said, we will be looking to entertain a motion to approve this year's FY twenty-two Rockland Public Schools budget as presented.
Motion?
We have a motion from Mrs. Maroney.
And a second?
And we have a second from Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That is a vote. Our next vote is that we will be looking to suspend our school budget public hearing for the purposes of re-entering our regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Motion?
We have a motion from Mrs. Maroney.
And a second?
And a second from Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a very, that is a vote. Thank you very, very much. So first on the agenda for our regularly scheduled school committee meeting is the acceptance and approval of minutes from the school committee meeting of April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion?
We have a motion from Mrs. Maroney.
And a second?
And a second from Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much, ladies. Seeing nothing under correspondence, we will move to audience. We have our three hun, our three fifty-one project student, Nicole Sidroni, with us here this morning. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you for having me. I wish we had a shorter name.
Thank you very much for having us. Let me just quickly, for those people who are not aware, Project Three Fifty-One is a service learning program. One student is selected from our eighth grade each year. It doesn't get any better than this. Nicole is a member of our National Junior Honor Society. She's a member of our student government. She is a member of our yearbook committee. She has been on honor roll since grade five. It, she's remarkable. She's the kind of kid you want to hang out with, and I can just imagine that great, great things are about to happen. One more thing, correct me if I'm wrong. Mrs. Longgan said today that she actually organized and facilitated our grade five tutoring program. That happened, I think, two or a couple of years ago, right? When that started?
Yes.
So she's about to do great things, and she's here tonight just to answer any questions that you might have. Go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you, Ms. Bond. As mentioned, my name is Nicole Sidroni, and I'm an eighth grader at Rogers. As you may know, Project Three Fifty-One is a youth-led nonprofit that works to lead change across all three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts. This organization is amazing. It has inspired me to be a leader for good in our community. Currently, I am running a clothing drive in support of Cradles to Crayons. Cradles to Crayons' mission is to collect clothes for children in need, from newborns to age twelve. Starting today, I'm collecting clothing donations in the RMS lobby via a donation bin. This upcoming Saturday, from eleven AM to one PM, I am holding a clothing drive in the RMS parking lot, where people can drive up, drive up and drop off clothes. All these donations will be delivered to Cradles to Crayons on May twenty-second. Up to this point, I've been working to spread the word. Possibly, you've seen some of the information I have shared on Facebook. So far, the feedback from the community has been remarkable. So many people have committed to donating. I could not be happier. I want to thank everyone here for the opportunity, and for all the people who have gone above and beyond to help me, especially my teacher, Ms. Harris. I am truly honored and grateful. Thank you all for having me today. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer. Thank you.
Nicole, well, congratulations, and great job. You're very well spoken, and even behind us all having to wear these masks. Great, it's a great honor to be selected to this, and I really like the endeavor that you've chosen to work towards. I think that's really fantastic. We'll have some more questions and I'll have some more comments, but I'm sure that my colleagues here have some questions and comments, so why don't I start out there? Ladies, questions and comments from the committee?
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you for your hard work. I also agree that that's a fantastic charity that you have committed to assisting with, and you should be very proud of yourself, and you're quite a treasure to this community. So thank you for all your hard work and congratulations.
Thank you so much. It's been an amazing opportunity to be a part of this program. I have learned so much, and it's inspired me so much, and I've had so many great mentors during this whole period.
That's great. Mrs. Maroney?
I just wanted to say congratulations. You definitely make us proud. You represent Rogers really well, and we couldn't ask for a better representative. So thank you for doing all you have since fifth grade even. You've been making us proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. How can we help? So I know you're trying to spread the word, and you're trying to get the word out there. You said it's, it's going to be a drop-off box at Rogers, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so how can we spread the word to help you get the word out there? Is there anything that we, as a member of the school committee, or the schools, or anyone out there, who, the millions of people watching this meeting right now, that they can do to sort of know, where they could spread the word about how to let everyone know about this?
Well, on Facebook, I've shared my flyer on Everything Rockland. If you could just share it to your Facebook page, or just honestly dropping off clothes on Saturday.
Great.
That would be a tremendous help.
Well, I'll do both.
Thank you.
Outstanding work from everything you've done thus far. Great job with Project Three Fifty-One, and good luck with this clothing drive, and I'll be happy to be helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for our guest?
No.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Sidroni, and I think we have a presentation for you, and we're looking to take a little picture, I think. Is that right?
Yeah, on behalf of the, would you want to come up?
I'd love to, yeah.
All right. And I'll begin.
Oh, he went the other way.
So on behalf of the Rockland Public Schools and the Rockland School Committee, we would like to award you the Certificate of Accomplishment. It's awarded for participating in the Community Service Project Three Fifty-One on this tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Next up on tonight's agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cron.
All right. Thank you. I just want to announce that on June first, at six PM, we will hold a virtual kindergarten information night. Each principal will host a separate session for the parents of their building. So be on the lookout for that invite, but again, it's June first at six PM. If you'd like to save, save the date, and you have a kindergartner starting off this year. Next, I'd like to remind everyone that the Rockland Education Foundation's golf tournament is taking place this year, once again, August thirteenth, so please mark your calendars and save the date. The Rockland Education Foundation is an incredible organization of former educators and former administrators who dedicate tremendous amounts of time to support the teachers in the district and their creative projects. So we want to support, in turn, support their golf tournament. That is their largest fundraiser, so August thirteenth. Our AP exams have begun, and I just want to wish all of the students good luck. I know it's a lot of curriculum to cram into your heads, especially this year, and I am impressed by each of you who are taking the test, and I want to wish you well. Finally, I'd like to remind everyone that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I would like to encourage anyone who is struggling to not struggle alone. You have help at school. I'd encourage you to speak to one of your counselors, your favorite teacher, anyone, but if you're struggling, and this goes for parents too, please reach out. This has been a very difficult year, and I think people are struggling, and it's okay to admit if you are. So let's all take advantage of Mental Health Awareness Month and, and see if we can help, help a neighbor. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. And I think we're all struggling a little bit, aren't we? It's okay to talk about, it's okay to admit it. We all look for help with each other, our families, our schools, our schools are certainly here for support. We're all suffering a little. It's important to talk about a little bit. And on the other note from your report, I just wanted to comment that I'm really glad to hear that the Rockland Educational Foundation Golf Tournament's back again this year. It's an awesome event, raises a ton of money, there's always a lot of great faces and some really great and not-so-great golfers that are there. But I think everyone, those aforementioned great golfers, should be put on notice that our colleague, Dr. Cron, here has bought himself some new clubs and has really worked on his game, so he's coming for you. Look out, everybody.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Biggins, I have one more thing that I forgot. I'd like to introduce our student representative tonight. This is Maria Paula. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Great. She is a junior. She is our vice president of the Rockland High School Student Government, and she will be our student representative next year. So we're going to have her joining us for the remainder of this year, and then we'll have her again next year. So welcome.
Welcome.
So it's awesome. I think it's great that you're here. I think it's great that a few years back, we started our student representative program. It's really worked out really well so far, not only for the student representatives and the student body to be able to bring to us concerns or questions that you guys might have, but for us to sort of learn from you on what's working and what's not working. But we're really glad to have you. Thank you for being here and volunteering to do this, and please don't ever be afraid to ask a question at a meeting. I shared with you at the beginning of the meeting, at the conclusion of our meetings, we all give a little public service announcement, so we're always going to have you do that too, if there's an announcement that you'd like to make on behalf of the student body, or there's a question that you have, it's a great time to be able to share that. Do you want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I'm Maria Paula. I am involved all over the school. You can find me playing sports. I do more or less ten different clubs on, like, throughout the year. I'm very dedicated and driven to, like, making the school better, and yeah.
Great. Well, great, welcome to be here. You're welcome to be a part, active part of our meetings. It's really great speaking for all of us to be able to volunteer and give back, and in a very real way, you're doing that too for your colleagues and friends in, in your school. So thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
All right. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cron.
Can I ask a question?
Please, go ahead, Dr. Small.
So I'm delighted to hear that there's going to be a virtual information night for the kindergarten parents. What is the current plan to do transitions for the elementary school kids to the middle school? Will they have an opportunity to do like a tour or a virtual tour, and the same for the middle school going to high school? What do those opportunities look like?
That work is already begun, but yes, there will be formal opportunities for parents, and we are concentrating quite carefully at the four-to-five transition. We have a new principal who will be starting on July one.
I read.
And she's very excited.
I'm very excited that she's a physics major. I was just saying that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's a smart cookie. We're, we're very excited about that, and we are focusing on grade four, the four-to-five transition and the eight-to-nine transition. But I'll give you a more thorough report at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
I also have a question regarding kindergarten. Have you seen a spike in enrollment at all yet or interest due to people maybe holding their children back last year and then kind of double, I guess, this year?
Yeah, we're, we have approximately a hundred and fifty-six signed up right now, which is a little ahead where we usually are, and we have pockets that we know have not signed up yet. So I'm anticipating perhaps even a need for a tenth kindergarten class this year, which would be a great problem for us to have. So in answer to your question, yes. And I don't know if it's just me being hopeful, or if it's really going to materialize, but in, in my conversations with Donna, who does kindergarten signups and trying to keep up with that, I think, I think we are a little ahead of where we've been in years past. So we're anticipating. We also have some who's, who just start, are starting right in on first grade, so that's happening as well.
Interesting.
So first grade has spiked a little bit.
Great news.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, no question. Thank you.
Okay. Next up on tonight's agenda is approval of our monthly reports. We'll be looking for four motions to approve reports for administrators, nurse, pupil personnel, and guidance.
Four motions?
We have four motions by Mrs. Maroney.
And four seconds?
And we have four seconds by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor? Thank you, ladies. That is a vote. Next on tonight's agenda are always informative and actually very enjoyable to read school newsletters. We have school newsletters for Aston School, Jefferson School, Memorial Park, the middle school, and the Rockland High School. Are there any questions or comments about the newsletters from the committee?
I want to say that in the photos from Memorial Park, I see they have a book vending machine, and I absolutely love that.
I noticed that too.
And so I'm hopeful that will come to the new school when it is finally up and running, the new elementary school, but I think that's awesome.
Yeah, that's great. Kids love it.
Couple of things I saw, I just wanted to point out. I came across Jefferson's, and Jefferson's right at the top, it says, "Please use the translate button if you need the Jefferson Journal in any other language," right at the top. And I thought that's really great, really easy to access, so for anybody who might be challenged, because they might be, they might speak a different language, it's accessible to anybody in our district to be able to read. Couple of other things. I know we have MCAS testing coming up. I see that right in here, that's noted, and I think we may have similar opinions on MCAS and it being administered this year, but nonetheless, whatever our opinions are, it is being administered this year, and our kids are, and teachers are gearing up for it, and I know we'll meet the challenge head-on, and just like we have a difficult year, and our kids will be well-slept, well-fed, well-slept, well-fed, and ready to meet the day for MCAS coming up. Also in here, it notes it was Teacher Appreciation Week just this past week, and I don't want to miss a moment to thank all of our teachers and paraprofessionals and everybody who works in our schools, and it's just another occasion to be able to do that and to thank them. One other, a couple of comments. Cheerleaders are named SSL, or excuse me, are named, yeah, S- fall SSL champions yet again. Girls volleyball completes an undefeated season and named SSL champions. I think we owe congratulations to both those ladies teams. So other than that, about the newsletters, they're always colorful and informative and great, so thank you to all of the schools and principals for submitting those. Next up, item six, under old business, seeing nothing, we will move on to item seven, which is new business. And item A under item seven is the request for approval of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Rogers Middle School Student Handbook. This is the first reading. Is there any questions or comments about the student handbook?
We have Ms. Bond here, if there are any questions.
Ms. Bond, is there any changes of note that we should be aware of?
I don't think so. Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Griffin and I sat down and just a couple of things, probably coming mostly out of what's been going on the last year and a half, some stuff that we found that we have put down to the school, but nothing significant happened.
Okay.
I do have one quick question. It said they can come in for breakfast at seven forty-five, and it's being revised to they can enter the building at seven forty-five. Are they going to congregate in one location, or is it?
No, that's new.
Yeah.
Actually, that's a good question. That's new because of this year.
Yeah.
So we've had in the past that we kind of all can't even hung out in the caf or the gym or something like that, and they're going right up to all their classrooms at seven forty-five, so they're getting, they're modeling the high school now, getting started, and their homework checking in. We actually moved, instead of going to homeroom, now we're going right to first period, so that's all part of the protocols, I think, we put in because of pandemic. So they'll go either up to class or at breakfast, and everybody be ready to go at eight o'clock.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the handbook?
No.
Would it please the committee that we table it as the first reading to vote on it for a second reading?
Yes.
Okay. Before we do, may move to that, not so much a question, but just a comment really for everybody. I read through this quite a bit. And hazing policy and bullying, and talks a little bit about how it's all sort of our responsibility to, A, number one, not do that, not be a part of that, but B, to report it when you see it. Harassment and hazing and bullying are never okay. I know in Rockland Public Schools, we work really hard, and I've witnessed them work very hard on building an inclusive environment where we can all be kind to each other and where we can all live and work and learn safely in the same place together. And a couple of things just jumped out at me, and I just wanted to highlight it so And talks a little bit about how it's all sort of our responsibility to, A, number one, not do that, uh, not be a part of that, but B, to report it when you see it. Um, harassment and hazing and bullying are never okay. I know in Rockland Public Schools, we work really hard, and I've witnessed them work very hard on building an inclusive environment where we can all be kind to each other and where we can all live and work and learn safely in the same place together. And, um, a couple of things just jumped out at me, and I just wanted to highlight it so everyone knows about it. Under the hazing policy, uh, not only is it the right thing to do to not bully somebody, but it's actually the law not to bully or haze somebody. Um, section seventeen of the hazing policy, whoever is a principal, organizer, or participant in the crime of hazing, as defined therein, shall be punished by a fine of not more than three thousand dollars or imprisoned in a house of correction for not one, one more year. Now, this is, I'm talking about the extreme sort of hazing stuff. Um, and then it goes on to talk about being able to report these things when you see them. This isn't just for kids. This is for sort of our whole Rockland school community, whether your staff or whether your students. It's important to report things that aren't being done rightly and to do it, uh, and do it in the right way. Later on here in the, um, handbook, on page thirty-five of the one I'm looking at right here, Appendix B, there is a Rockland Public Schools Bullying Prevention and Intervention Incident Reporting Form. So right here in your handbook is given to you a tool to report any injustice, any bullying, any harassment that you see. If you're uncomfortable with it, say something about it. This form right here, as it's noted right on the back of it, reports may be filed anonymously. So if you see something, someone being mistreated, someone being treated the wrong way, report it. We were concerned about it. We want to make sure that that's not happening in any one of our schools. So I'm glad to see that language exists in our handbook. Um, so that being said, and I'm not saying this for any reason anyway. Nothing's happened. It's not a problem. Um, but I'm just saying, for anybody, um, out there, just to make sure we take care of each other. We want this to be the best school community that it can ever possibly be. So with that being said, we will entertain a motion to table this first reading of this handbook.
Motion?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroni.
And a second?
And we have a second by Mrs. Davidson. Thank you very much. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thanks so much. Next up, item B under new business is the request for approval for Jane Hackett to have authority to sign for the district. Dr. Cron, would you like to talk about this?
Yeah, it's, it, Colleen Forlizzi was given authority to sign. Um, it's primarily, uh, uh, financial situations where she would need the authority to sign for the district. But I do recommend to the committee that you approve Jane Hackett to have the authority to sign.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
So is she signing everything, or are we still signing, um, like, our regular things that we sign?
No, it's basically giving her the authority to sign on my behalf.
Okay.
If circumstances warrant it.
Right.
Only.
That's what I thought.
And it's generally just with business transactions, with financial matters.
Like she has in the past.
Like she has in the past, like Colleen always did.
Right.
Colleen had the authority from the school committee to sign.
Signing warrants for payroll and things like that.
Right.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear.
Quick question. So does that also relate to the school building project, or is it just related to the school committee and the school?
No, she's actually the only person who holds the MCCPO license, so she is the person, she, you have to have on any school building committee one person who's licensed. It was Colleen. Jane just completed her program and passed her test, and she is now the licensed person. So she will have, uh, certain authority in the building project because of that license.
Okay.
But it's sort of separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? So we will, uh, entertain a motion, uh, for approval for Jane Hackett to have authority to sign for the district.
A motion?
And a second?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroni and a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Last up, we have a request for approval for a fundraiser. Um, this fundraiser would benefit, uh, boys and girls track. Um, and it is a gold card fundraiser. Um, Dr. Cron, and the purpose of this fundraiser is to, uh, raise money for equipment, apparel, et cetera. Uh, Dr. Cron, a recommendation?
I do recommend it.
Outstanding. Um, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Mrs. Maroni.
And a second?
And a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor? Uh, thank you very much. That's a vote. Dr. Cron, quick question about fundraisers. I know we do fundraisers often, and they're awesome, and usually upon occasion. But is there means that at any random time throughout the year, that a person, a private person, may be able to make a donation to any one of our schools' programs, whether it be a sports program, or a drama, or a music program? Is there, um, an easy, easy findable means, uh, for anybody in the community who might be willing to support any one of our programs, a mechanism to do that?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. I, I would say either reach out to your principal or reach out to me, and I will connect you with the right person. We've had some folks who have donated some, some great things, like pianos. Um, I'm not recommending that you donate your piano.
Play that thing, right?
But, um, we've had some great donations. Uh, someone donated a color printer at the beginning of the year, sort of randomly. Um, we, we love it. It, we'll put it to use, and, um, you can reach out to me or your principal. I'd be happy to connect you.
Glad to hear that. Thanks very much. Next up on tonight's agenda, um, our public service announcements. I will start from my left and work to my right. We will start with our student representative, Maria.
Um, so now that the school year is kind of wrapping up, so are clubs and sports. And so student government is having our last meeting, May nineteenth. And not only is it a, like, is a going-away meeting for our graduating seniors, but is al- it is also a welcoming meeting for our rising freshmen. So, um, all freshmen are welcome to join if they have an interest in student government. Um, I also know eighth graders are doing class elections for their upcoming year, so for their freshman year, by the end of this year. So, it's great.
Outstanding. Thank you for that.
No problem.
Any questions about tonight's meeting or any, any comments about anything? Did we bore you sufficiently? Okay, thanks for being with us again, Maria. See you next time. Uh, Mrs. Hennessy?
Um, not too many things. I just, I guess, wanted to say Happy Belated Mother's Day to everyone out there, everyone who's acting, um, in that mother role, whether you're a grandmother, a stepmother, um, a dad doing double duty. Uh, thank you for supporting your kids, uh, in our community, um, and helping them throughout this year. It's been difficult. Um, also, I think we've covered it with the AP exams. Just wanted to say good luck, um, and with MCAS testing, and saw some things through Facebook on Mr. Rockland, so that's exciting with all the nominations that are out there. So a lot of good stuff happening in town, for sure. That's it.
Mrs. Maroni?
Um, I wanted to tell what I would be doing, um, virtually this weekend. I think a few of us are going to. Um, I'll be taking the, charting the course, um, course through the mass associations of the school committees. Um, it's sort of an ethics, um, class that we get to attend. Each year, they have it for, um, elected officials. Um, some of the agenda items will be open meeting law, ethics, budget and finance, collective bargaining, superintendency vow, Dr. Cron, and special education. So it is two parts. It'll be this Saturday morning and next Saturday morning. So I will be attending it this weekend, along with Dr. Small. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroni. Mrs. Davidson?
Um, just a quick one. I just, I want to wish everybody good luck on their MCAS. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Small?
Uh, so I wanted to take the opportunity, I know it was last week, but just to recognize our teachers. Um, we appreciated them last week, but we also appreciate them every day, not just for their skills and their talent, but also their passion, their flexibility, their creativity, and how they clearly love the children of Rockland. So I wanted to make sure that I called them out for that. There was also an article in the New York Times this morning, um, and it's talking about how the current administration would like to move forward with universal pre-K, and they're basing that on some of the data that's coming out of a study that was done in Boston. And I just think it speaks to the foresight, and it makes me so proud of us here in Rockland that this administration had already thought about that and was pushing forward with that. And with our new school, we will be able to do that. Um, and I think one of the statistics that stuck out with me is that it really improved the, um, high school graduation rate. So I think it just speaks so highly of us as a town and, um, all the planning that has gone into the new school project. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved for that. I think that puts Rockland, it just shows that we are going above and beyond for our kids, which is exactly what we should be striving to do. Um, and then lastly, uh, right before this meeting, Pfizer received emergency use authorization for their COVID vaccine for kids aged twelve to fifteen, which I think personally, as a pediatrician, is just very exciting. And it just continues to bring us hope and move us closer to, um, resuming sort of, uh, normal life. So, that's what I have.
Thank you for that, Dr. Small. Um, a couple of things. First of all, the school building project. I, um, was driving back from dropping my kids off at one of their sports this week, and, um, I stopped and was watching the trucks move. I felt like my inner four-year-old was in full effect, just watching trucks move dirt. Um, and it seems so simple, but I was watching sort of the foundation of the future of our kids, uh, right there. And it's super exciting. Um, it's been a lot of years in the making to get to this point, and I'm just, I'm really excited to see, um, all that happening out there. And just real quick, too, as I mentioned about going to sports, um, it's been pretty exciting for a lot of us that have kids in town to be back at activities and to be out on the baseball fields and to be out on the soccer fields and the lacrosse fields. And I was at my son's baseball game last week down at Spring Street, looking around at all these games going on. And it really just kind of struck me about all those moms and dads that are volunteering, doing all that, and how good it is to be back. And, um, it's one of those really feel-good things about what a great community we do live in, because at every level, people are giving back. Every, every level, people are coaching, volunteering on school committees. So it's good to see that sort of part of normal life coming back in our town, seeing our kids on our fields. So that's all I have for public service announcements, uh, for tonight. So at this point, we will be looking for a motion to conclude our regularly scheduled, uh, school committee meeting for the purpose of moving to executive session for the purpose of discussing non-union salaries not to resume into regular session.
A motion?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroni.
And a second?
And a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much, ladies. And thank you very much, Rockland. That does conclude tonight's meeting. We hope you have a very safe and, uh, very happy and very fun and very good weather rest of the month of May. Thank you very much, and we'll see you next time.